The time is now 1:16 PM. The State Board of Education is returning to open session. And a quorum of the board is present, the regular meeting, and the State Board of Education has reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically in the room with us today, and then move to those in the queue online. The first person today is Heather Eckner, and I have distributed the packet from her that will correlate with her public comment.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, and department staff. I'm Heather Eckner, and I serve as the statewide director of education for the Autism Alliance of Michigan. Over the past year, our organization has used this public comment time to elevate the voices of nearly 900 families who responded to the Special Education Experience Survey. Additionally, the Autism Alliance of Michigan's public comments have advocated for comprehensive special education finance reform. We've addressed low graduation rates for students with IEPs. We've highlighted concerns in MDE's annual IDEA application. We've challenged the overuse of alternate assessments, and called for ending the functional independent tier of the My Access. In June, we called attention to Michigan's alarming dropout crisis among students with disabilities, which is driven by patterns of exclusion, marginalization, and unmet need. This month, we urged the board to confront a deeply intertwined issue: the continued use of harmful and discriminatory seclusion and restraint practices in Michigan public schools. On July 3rd, the U.S. Department of Justice announced a civil rights settlement with Mount Calm Area ISD after an investigation revealed that students with disabilities were being secluded and restrained more than 2,400 times during the review period, often not during emergencies, which is what our state law requires, but in response to typical classroom behaviors. These violations of the Americans with Disabilities Act are not an outlier. They reflect systemic failures that extend far beyond one district. Our own Special Education Experience Survey findings reinforce this. Thirty-four percent of families in the survey reported that their child had been restrained or secluded. Seventy-two percent of respondents said it occurred during a non-emergency situation. Sixty-one percent of survey participants described lasting emotional trauma, and nearly forty percent were not notified in a timely or transparent manner. These findings from our families make clear what many already know: the safeguards Michigan put in place nearly a decade ago are not enough. Rules alone do not protect students. Implementation, oversight, and accountability do. We urge the board to take an active role in leading statewide reform, as outlined in our recent policy brief, which you all have, it's included in your materials. The Autism Alliance of Michigan calls upon Michigan leadership to prohibit all forms of seclusion, restrict restraint to true emergencies only with robust oversight, mandate trauma-informed training for all school staff, ensure timely notification for families and public reporting of incidents, and establish local and regional oversight bodies that include family and advocate voices. Michigan students deserve learning environments that are safe, respectful, and inclusive. No student, regardless of disability, should be subjected to trauma in the name of discipline. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes public participation for today.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Board, it is 1:21 PM. Dr. Pugh, I again turn the floor over to you to chair this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and we would like to welcome back to the table consultants from HYA. Thank you. Dr. Max McGee, who we've met earlier, president of HYA, and Dr. Connie Collins, senior consultant with HYA. And as we begin our discussion in this open session, I would like to remind board members that we will refer to candidates by their applicant number for deliberation, or until a board member is ready to make a motion to offer interviews. Names will be stated publicly in the motion for interviews. Dr. McGee, Dr. Collins, would you please start the conversation and discussion?
Go ahead. Thank you very much for a process that began June 13th. We've made a lot of progress and certainly appreciate the hard work of the board, and we're excited about the opportunity to discuss potential candidates for first-round interviews. Prior to that, just a few quick words about the process. We met during the engagement phase. We personally talked to over 250 different stakeholders. We had almost 1,600 completed responses to the survey. We compiled all that information into a leadership profile report that is posted on the State Board website, and it's posted on the HYA website. On the final two pages of that report, 43 and 44, there were 12 summarizing 12 desired characteristics and qualifications. So as we went through the applications that we received during the recruit phase, we matched their relevant experience, their background, with those 12 items, and have determined a recommended list of, pardon me, seven potential candidates, applicants for first-round interviews that we will be presenting to you. In total, we had 33 applicants. We had expected 25 to 30, so we were pleased to get 33, and we are very grateful to all that took the time to apply. At this time, we'd like to go through by number those folks we recommended, and with minimal identifying information at this point. Is that correct? First is candidate number five, who is a current Michigan superintendent, and the individual has been superintendent in two different directors of districts, a principal, a curriculum director, has secondary and higher education teaching experience, and is well-known throughout the state for his professional organizations and civic involvement. Candidate number two, or candidate, the second candidate, is candidate number seven. Candidate number seven is also a superintendent of a school district. He has worked in that district for years as, in multiple administrative positions. That candidate has also been a principal in two different schools within that same district, and assistant principal, and a teacher, and substitute teacher within that district. And he likewise is recognized for his accomplishments, both statewide and nationally, and is active in promoting the priorities of the board. Next interview, excuse me, next applicant is, we are recommending is number 10. Number 10 has served in multiple jobs. He's currently an executive director. He has also been a superintendent. He has served as a principal and instructor in alternative and adult education, and he is, again, a lifelong Michigan educator, and has played an important part in some significant legislation. Next is candidate number 12. She is currently a combined superintendent and curriculum director at a smaller district. However, she was a principal in one of the state's larger districts before going to that, well-known for staff relationships and instructional leadership. She has also been a chief innovation officer and director of secondary education and instructional coach, and began her career as a high school teacher. In addition, she is also a lawyer, an attorney. Candidate number 14 is, was recently a state superintendent of schools. She has also been a chief academic officer in another state, and an executive officer in district priority schools in another state, executive director of instructional leadership, middle school supervisor, director of academics. And then she got her start teaching middle school and high school in Ohio, and was an assistant superintendent in Ohio before moving to first Tennessee, and then her final state where she had been state superintendent. Candidate number 16 is currently a Michigan, another Michigan superintendent, and has a vision and accomplished education leader. He has 25 years of experience in education. He has worked with the assistant superintendent for a regional, for a RESA. He has been a deputy superintendent. He has also been an executive director of instruction, and a principal, and also a classroom teacher. And finally, we have, pardon me, another out-of-state candidate, number 22, who is currently a consultant coach with a nationally-recognized organization that serves superintendents in school districts across the country, former superintendent in a large urban school district out of state. Prior to that, he has been a principal, and a teacher, and an associate superintendent, and has also been a school improvement consultant, director of instruction, and started his work as a high school teacher in Colorado. And he is, has significant professional accomplishments, both in his previous state as well as as a consultant coach across the country. I hope that's enough information for now. We can go into more detail as you wish.
Thank you, Dr. McGee and Dr. Collins, for providing us with this information and for those recommendations. Before we do get started, I would like to give a brief history of the motions that we offer for interviews. In years past, the motions included the entire pool of candidates to be put forward for interviews. We are prepared to have a motion in a candidate pool format, or individuals individually, whichever the board or the board members would prefer. So at this time, are there any board members who would like to offer a motion for semifinalist interviews?
Turn your mic on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that we interview candidates number five, seven, 10, 12, 14, 16, and 22.
It's been seconded and supported, and I do believe that we need to provide the names at this time.
In the motion, that's where the names are provided, is in the motion.
What if it's voted down? I thought it would only be if they are gonna get interviewed.
Yeah, once we vote it up, don't we even announce?
Once it's approved, we announce. I don't think we would in the motion in case it votes down.
Dr. McGee's, Dr. Mc, Doctors McGee and Collins can correct me if I'm wrong, but confidentiality in conversation with persons who are interviewing are aware that if they make it to this phase, that their names are being made open to the public.
If the vote's approved? If it's not, what if it's not approved, and then their name is disclosed without getting an interview?
If they are, my understanding is, I am not an attorney. My understanding is, is if they are selected, at the time they are selected to be interviewed as semifinalists, their names and materials are, if there's, that's my understanding.
What I was referring to is the conversations that you've had with, with.
Oh, yeah, they are all very well aware that, that their names may, that these names that we recommended, if they are selected to be interviewed, their names and materials will be made public.
So.
Yeah.
Point of order, because we're in the middle of a motion, right?
Correct.
So in the middle of the motion, point of order. Are we saying the names in the motion, or are we just giving the numbers in this motion?
Just the numbers.
I need some clarity, part of the material.
I would prefer to just leave it as numbers.
We can leave it as, okay, well, let's leave it as numbers.
The motion has been seconded and supported on the numbers, so continue there.
That would be my preference to leave it as numbers.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to propose an amendment to add number 19.
Okay. Support.
Is there support? Okay, you did, you're supporting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I need to vote on that.
Discussion?
Well, I mean, I would just like to see this person interviewed. There could be broad support. I, not necessarily mine, but I have reason to believe that I could be persuaded, one of the few that actually could be persuaded.
Any more discussion? It has been moved, seconded, discussed.
And this is on the amendment to add 19? Okay. Bullock?
Do you have to restate the motion?
No.
With that additional number?
No, because we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the base.
Yes.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Back to the original motion. And we have any more discussion there? It has been moved?
Well, yeah, I'll just say that though I'm gonna vote no, it doesn't mean that I oppose every one. It's probably no surprise, as a Republican and conservative, that my list would be significantly different than this list, significantly different. That does not mean that in the end, I may, I could vote for a particular candidate maybe the better of the ones I'm too happy with, but still, I just want to, for the record, it doesn't, doesn't mean I oppose them all necessarily. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'll just say that my yes is, in that same spirit, however, this process has been inherently flawed from the beginning. I've been very clear about that publicly. I do believe the candidate has already been chosen, and so my yes is, this is the process that, that you guys have decided to honor, and that's, there's nothing I can change about that.
Any more discussion?
Well, I just want to be clear that their innuendos are not, I haven't selected a candidate. I haven't had any pre-conversations about any candidate, so I take some kind of dislike to that commentary that we've already selected a candidate, and this is all fresh and new to me, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? So it has been moved, it has been seconded, and do we, well, we can come back and put the names to the numbers, and so we'll call the vote. Discussion has taken place.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. At this time, since we did it this way, do we want to go ahead and, and, do we want to vote with the names, or just go ahead and we're good?
Just mention what they are.
Okay.
You just acknowledge the name and number.
I'm happy to.
Please.
I'm happy to. Five, candidate Chris Timis. Seven, candidate Glenn Maleko. Ten, candidate John Severson. Twelve, candidate Judy Walton. Fourteen, candidate Lisa Coons. Sixteen, candidate Paul Sala. Twenty-two, candidate Thomas Ahart.
Okay, the candidates have been read. And we want to congratulate everyone and thank everyone, all those, the 33 candidates who did submit, and for all that they do for children in this state and across the country. Want to congratulate and thank, again, each of you who have gone through this process. Dr. McGee, can you now, now that the board has voted for the semifinalist interviews, explain the next steps in the process?
Certainly.
Pardon me? That he, no, because the public may not know those names. Can you just say who they are, like their, their position currently?
Yeah, good.
Read them, or would you like to read them? Okay. Why don't you take the names? We have them right here.
Yes. The individuals are, we identified number five, Chris Timis, superintendent here within the state of Michigan.
Do you want to mention where?
Oh, you want that more specific thing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Chris Timis is currently superintendent of schools in Dexter Community Schools, and he is a president of the Future Learning Council. He has also been a superintendent in Adrian Public Schools, and he is, do I need to go through his education? Okay.
Just mention each one, what they are currently, yeah.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay, great.
Next is Glenn Maleko, and Glenn is superintendent in Dearborn, Michigan, and he's been 11 years as superintendent there in Dearborn. Do we need more information?
Candidate number 10 is John Severson. John is currently the executive director of the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, and prior to that, he was the ISD superintendent for the Muskegon Candidate number 12 is Judy Walton. Judy Walton is currently combined superintendent and curriculum director of Harrison Community Schools, and previously, she served multiple roles in the Forest Hills Public School District. Candidate number 14 is Lisa Coons. Lisa is formerly the state superintendent of public instruction in Virginia, and prior to that, chief academic officer for the Tennessee Department of Education. Candidate number 16, do you want to do that?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, you do that.
Candidate number 16 is superintendent Paul Sala, and he is superintendent at Huron Valley Schools, and basically, he's been there since 2018 as superintendent.
And candidate number 22 is Thomas Ahart. Thomas is currently a consultant coach, does some work for the Council of Great City Schools, former superintendent of Des Moines Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if you want to just talk about the next steps.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the next steps are, the board will be interviewing the seven finalists on August 18th and 19th. Dr. Collins and Dr. Rich and I do, we will contact the candidates and set up their interview times. I understand we will have four interview times on August 18th, three interview times on August 19th, and following that, HYA will assist the board in facilitating deliberations to choose finalists to bring back the week of August 25th. In addition to that, we will encourage, I know the first-round interviews have been offered virtually, when we contact the candidates, we will provide both options to them, and it is our sense that even those out of state will be very excited about having the opportunity to be here in person. During the 90 minutes, there will be the opportunities for the candidates to introduce themselves, beginning opportunity to end to answer questions, make closing comments, and in the interim, the board members will each have questions to answer. HYA will supply them with a rubric if they wish to use it for their questions, and then, but that is certainly not necessary. So we are excited about contacting these candidates this afternoon to get these times set up, and we will forward that information to Ms. Evans here, and get that scheduled. Ideally, we can get that scheduled within the next 24 hours.
And then, adhering to the Open Meetings Act, those dates, the dates and times will be made public?
That's correct. Public notice will be posted as well as the agenda.
Yes.
Madam President, I had a question about process. The first person has the, do they have the disadvantage of not knowing the, from what I understand, and I'm not sure I like this, that we have to, out of quote-unquote fairness, ask them the exact same questions, which I hope maybe we don't have to do that, but if that, as I recall, that was what was decided last time, seems like the first person's at a disadvantage, everybody else will know the questions, because it's a public meeting. So is that true?
That is true.
Okay.
Yeah. So one thing that, I mean, and sometimes the first person feels they have an advantage by being first, too. First and last are usual choices. We encourage the candidate, we ask the candidates not to watch other interviews. We can't legislate that, but we, we, we request, respectfully request that they not do that, though they certainly can, but, so that they don't have that unfair advantage. Yeah.
If that's a concern, could we not share the questions in advance for all the candidates?
Well, it's gonna be public, so they could read the first one. I mean, they could see the first ones.
How is it an advantage for the first one, then? If everyone knows them?
Advantage for the first one?
How? If everyone has them?
Oh, everybody else can watch the first interview.
Oh, he's saying send out the questions.
Oh, send them out? Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think that's the right move.
Well, that, although I might want to ask.
It's not a pop quiz, right?
No, I mean, I'm hoping that I can ask something extemporaneously. Lightning rounds, maybe I can convince you all to have lightning rounds.
One of the practices we recommend for the finalists is that we do provide them with a presentation topic or topics or scenario to prepare for ahead of time and present to the, or that's just for the two or three finalists, then that, that would be a presentation of 10 to 15, I mean, a presentation of some substance, so they would have that opportunity to prepare for that topic or scenario, whatever we choose. But we, as you did previously, Ms. McMillan, we recommend, you know, having the same questions if there needs to be a follow-on, if there's a search for clarity, that's fine, but we providing them questions ahead of time, we generally don't do that, but again, we work with the board, we work for the board, so we will do whatever you desire.
Well, we thank you all, and we're, we've made a lot of progress, so I'm ready to turn the chair back over to Dr. Rice. Thank you.
Board members, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of June 10th, 2025? Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, for moving that, and Ms. Lipton for seconding it. Is there any discussion associated therewith? Hearing and seeing none. If I could have a... If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative committee meeting of August 7th, 2025. Dr. Pritchett moves. Ms. Lipton seconds. Any discussion associated therewith?
The audio is available, right?
That's correct.
The audio is available, yes. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder? And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board at 1:47, the next item on today's agenda is a presentation of Michigan Strategic Education Plan Goal Number Eight, to provide adequate and equitable school funding fiscal year 26 budget reflections. This presentation will outline the three budget proposals to date, the governor's executive budget recommendation, the Senate and the House budgets. It will cover both the State School Aid Act and the MDE department budget, and will make mention of the challenges at the federal level. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, deputy superintendent in the Division of Business Health and Library Services, and Ms. Olivia Ponte, legislative liaison in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Rice. Good afternoon, board members. We're here today to present on Michigan Strategic Education Plan Goal Eight, to provide adequate and equitable school funding. And we're going to do this specifically through talking about the fiscal year 26 budget process, because as we all know, that is still ongoing. So what we will see on the slides throughout this presentation is a table that looks like this. And if we look at the headers from left to right, we'll look at the fiscal year 25 current funding levels year-to-date, and then the executive budget recommendation, the Senate budget recommendation, and the House budget recommendation. So to start off, for per pupil allocations, you can see, board, that the dollars are roughly the same per pupil for traditional LEAs and PSAs across the board. But where we see a difference is in the foundation allowance for cyber charters. We've got about $8,000 per pupil in the executive budget recommendation and the Senate recommendation, and about $10,000 per pupil in the House budget. The main difference in the House budget recommendation is the inclusion of Section 22-F, which is essentially a block grant of several dozen line items in the school aid budget, many of which the department feels need to be kept independent for different reasons. So I'll highlight a few. One example is Section 41, English learners. These students, this funding is for students who are English learners. Not every student in Michigan is an English learner. Therefore, that funding should be for those, that subset of children who need that funding for that purpose. Additionally, there are some programs that need to be administered at a state level. Think 27A and 27C, the My Future Educator fellowships, and student-teacher stipends. A singular district is unlikely to continue such a program when there's no assurance that they stay in that district, right? So while it being overseen by, you know, the state as a whole, we can build the pipeline in Michigan on a broad spectrum level.
All right, digging deeper into the goal areas of our state strategic education plan, here specific to Goal Eight, which is adequate and equitable funding, you will see that the House has ruled both partnership district support and funding specific to rural and isolated districts into that Section 22-F that Olivia just talked about, which will be dispersed on a per pupil basis statewide. This waters down the ability to realize that different students have different needs and different needs have different costs. The House has also proposed no funding for transportation, not even within their Section 22-F, which is a rural equity issue. The Senate increases the base funding for at-risk funding in Section 31A and would allow up to 30% of 31A to be used as recurring funding available to sustain low class sizes. Two additional line items rolled into Section 22-F in the House proposal are the special education equalization line and the bilingual education line. While the governor proposed to increase the special education equalization line, and the Senate proposed to increase the bilingual education line. Under school consolidation and infrastructure, the House proposes $286.5 million and increases the allowable uses of those consolidation and infrastructure funds to include such things as low class sizes and read by grade three. The governor proposed funding for infrastructure emergencies, and the Senate proposed funding for a new school infrastructure grant. The governor included $150 million for consolidation and demolition. This proposed section, Section 12-F, these are new funds, and they are not funds from the consolidation and infrastructure reserve fund. Moving on to Goal One, expanding early childhood learning opportunities, the House proposal includes a 10.9% decrease in GSRP funding and eliminates the additional GSRP startup grant funding. Under Goal Two, three of the department's major policy initiatives include low class sizes in high-poverty schools, mandatory letters training, and high-quality literacy instructional materials. The House proposes zero funding in any of these priorities, nor do they roll any previous funding up into their Section 22-F. The Senate did include a little over $74 million for Section 35M, which is considered to be a district on-ramp to PA 146 and 147. The Senate proposal also has a pilot program for low class sizes. You will hear more about these three priorities from Olivia in just a few minutes. Under Goal Three, again, you will see the House rolled all three of these line items up into the per pupil funding statewide in Section 22-F. It's important to note that this does not mean the House eliminated the funding for these efforts, but rather rolls it up into the per pupil payments to be spread equally across all districts. For Goal Seven, My Future Educator Fellowship and Student-Teacher Stipends were both rolled up into Section 22-F under the House proposal. The governor included funding for Grow Your Own, while the Senate included funding for the Student Loan Repayment Program and Talent Together. For CTE and Goal Four, the House did not include any specific funding for any CTE-specific line items, and rolled the CTE programming, middle college program, and CTE incentive payment up into Section 22-F. The governor included $22 million for CTE equipment upgrades, and the Senate included a significant increase for the CTE incentive payment. Both the governor and the Senate proposed funding over five years for our proposed CTE Pathways to Success program. And finally, Goal Five, Adult Education, was another line item that was rolled up into the House's proposal for Section 22-F. Now, back to Olivia.
All right, so now that you've seen what's in the three budget proposals on the table, what's the department advocating for? Well, we have four literacy legislative recommendations, all of which can be done through the budget. So the first is mandatory letters training for K-5 classroom teachers. The funding for letters training has been included in each of the past four fiscal year budgets. So we're advocating for that funding to be continued in the fiscal year 26 budget, as well as on the policy side, making that training mandatory for K-5 educators for whom this is a specialty. The next is low class sizes in high-poverty K-3 classrooms. As Diane mentioned, the Senate included not only a separate pot of money for this, so $65 million to incentivize lowering class sizes, but also an allowance in 31A, the at-risk funding, to use that funding to lower class sizes in these high-poverty K-3s. And, you know, this is something that you passed a resolution to just a few months ago, board, and this is an acknowledgement of that need. The third is high-quality early literacy materials. So in fiscal year 25, the legislature appropriated $87 million in Section 35M for high-quality early literacy materials for districts. And 561 districts benefited from an initial grant in this area. And when I say initial, I mean that there were three separate categories from which to choose, the Tier One curricula, supplemental materials, professional development. So just because these 561 districts benefited from one category does not mean that if there was more funding available, they couldn't benefit from funding for a different category, a second or third. So to that point, we recommend a doubling of this amount for fiscal year 26, so that local districts are incentivized to start the implementation of PA 146 and 147, the literacy dyslexia laws, a full school year early. And the last, but certainly not least, is more in-person student instruction time. So state law requires 180 days of student instruction. Now, if we take away the nine days that are forgiven for conditions outside of school officials' control, we live in Michigan, we're not getting rid of snow days. The legislature permitted in 2019 seven days of student instruction, well, seven days of professional development to count as student instruction, even though students are not receiving student instruction, they're not in the building. Then in 2023, the legislature allowed 15 days to be conducted virtually, and for this to count as in-person student instruction. So we are, these decreases can permit as few as 149 days of in-person instruction with this additional 15 days of virtual instruction. So the department is advocating for these changes to be rectified and go back to how they were prior to 2019 and 2023. And it's important to note that on the second of the two issues, the 15 virtual days, both the House and the Senate did acknowledge the need for this to decrease, and both proposals proposed that that 15 days goes to seven days. So that's a start, but we're still advocating heavily for both of these to revert back to how they were. So moving from the school aid budget to the MDE budget, I want to take a minute and acknowledge that MDE has approximately 1% of the state's employees, or FTE, with roughly 2/10 of 1% of the state's budget, to oversee and disperse nearly 25% of the overall state budget. That's a lot. So how are we funded? So the Senate and the governor's recommendation are roughly similar. We've got a 13 FTE increase in the executive, a 15 FTE increase in the Senate. But the House proposes a 20% decrease in both funding and FTE. Given the immense responsibility that we're entrusted with, this is unreasonable. So there are some other important factors to think about as we're considering the state budget process. The first of which is that currently, $461.7 million is diverted from the school aid budget into the higher ed budget. The House proposal, which again is House Bill 4577, would more than quadruple this number and would take over $1.9 billion from PK to pre-K-12 students and give that to post-secondary institutions. All else being equal, any additional funding appropriated for roads would squeeze the rest of the state's combined general and school aid fund budgets. And as we know, this is a governor priority to combine the roads with the budget, as she affirmed just yesterday, that the budget is not complete until roads are funded. Some other factors to think about are federal budget factors. So many unknowns surround the impact of federal funding and potential block grants. But what we do know is that PL 11921, this is the federal reconciliation bill previously HR1, drastically cuts eligibility for both the Medicaid program as well as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Programs, or SNAP. And it's worth noting that participation in these programs determine at-risk thresholds for local districts. So think 31A and the opportunity index bands. The state budget office is currently working to determine the impact of these cuts on the state budget, but unlike federal government, the state budget must pass a balanced budget every year. Again, there are still many unknowns around the federal fiscal year 26 budget as well. So the president's federal fiscal year 26 budget proposal would eliminate such programs as migrant education and English learners, and would block grant others like supporting effective instruction grants and student support and academic enrichment grants. These changes are not reflected in the current U.S. Senate Appropriations Committee Federal Fiscal Year 26 Budget Proposal. But then again, no federal fiscal year 26 department budgets, like U.S. Ed, IMLS, and USDA, have been passed by Congress. So there's a lot happening, but as we learn more about what the federal budget process and we go further into the state budget process, we will continue to keep you apprised. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golzinski. Ms. Ponte, we appreciate your presentation. Board, let's shake out the cobwebs. What questions or comments do you have of our presenters on this important $20 billion conversation? Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Chairman. So I want to talk about categoricals. When I was in the legislature, they, you know, the locals loved the elimination of categoricals so they could spend the money as they felt best. So first, I'd like to acknowledge that, and you did mention it to some degree, it wasn't on the main slide, but the Republican House version increase is 20% higher than the governor's or the Democrat Senate's version as far as the foundation grant. It's 12,000 versus 10,000. I understand there's categoricals and the House rolled up the categoricals, but the, you know, the fact still remains, as I understand it, that if you just say foundation allowance, that the House version is 20% more than either the governor's or the Senate. Is that right?
Not exactly. So the foundation allowance is a separate line item, and they're roughly the same, House, Senate, and governor, at about 10,000. I believe the House is $10,025, the Senate and the House are closer to 10,000 on the dot. Where the 12,000 number comes in is from the Section 22-F, which is different than the foundation allowance, which provides an additional per pupil payment. But one thing that we didn't note in the short presentation is that to access the 22-F funding, which is the combination of these categoricals, a district would also have to pledge to get an SRO and a mental health professional, of which there might not be enough. So that was one concern.
So that would take a little bit away from that. But I guess my question regarding categoricals is that, don't, do the locals, have they weighed in on which one they prefer? Like, I don't know, the alphabet soup people, M A S B and administrators and whatever, the I and the As and all that? Are they articulating that they'd prefer no, you know, limit in categoricals so that they can decide how best to spend the money for their students? Or are they, have they weighed in on any of this?
Yes, a coalition of ED orgs did write a letter, and I think they're in the same position as the department, really, that there are some categoricals that absolutely should be rolled up, like small competitive grants that create a bigger administrative burden on the district as well as the department to administer. But then there are other grants that service these different students who have different costs, and if the cost is not being supplemented by the state in some way, then the district would still have to cover that cost through their own pot of money. For example, one of the items rolled up is state assessments, and that's federally required. So a district, whether or not there's funding available, would have to cover that.
Okay. And then also, just to acknowledge that, you know, certain kids who might go to certain schools are being judged to be less valuable, and they should have 12.6% decrease, those that are going to online charters that are getting, you know, are getting apparently, you know, similar education, or at least they're, in some ways, it might be better, in some ways, it might not, but it's what the parents have chosen is the best for their child. There's a, the proposal from the Senate and the governor is to treat them less valuable by 12.6%. And that's just my observations. Thanks. That's all. No questions.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Other questions? Senator Bullock and Ms. Lipton?
Not really questions. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a general, thank you for the presentation. I think that, in general, this budget, particularly the essential items rolled into 22F, is a marked step backward in where I think that the state was moving vis-à-vis the notion that as to school funding, you should be looking at what the true costs of educating a child are in Michigan, so that you're actually fully transparent with the public in terms of what are the cost pressures on educating different populations of students. We are not a homogeneous population in Michigan. We are a very, very robust population in Michigan. And I think that the costing-out study, which was, which has been not just studied but also looked at consistently over time, has shown us that a more enlightened way of funding is one of equity rather than equality. The old view was you give every student an equal amount, and there's some, I think, gut reaction of fairness, but what research has taught us since those days, perhaps 10, 15 years ago, maybe even longer, is that a better way is looking at the cost pressures on a student-by-student basis and really understanding that different students bring different cost pressures to school with them, whether it's living in deep poverty and having less literacy training before they get to school, the number of words that they know, whether it is additional transportation costs from having lived in a rural district or what have you. So prior to this budget, at least the last couple of budgets, seem to be moving in a direction that is based on research about what we know and how we should be funding education, not one of equality, but one of equity. And this, just a couple of observations about the rolling up of 22F. I think that's a very opaque way of budgeting. I don't think it is transparent. I think that, in my experience, having served on the Appropriations Committee, Ed Appropriations Committee during the time of severe cuts and belt tightening, roll-up budgets were used as a way of sort of making things very opaque to the public so that there was very little transparency in how the money is being spent. And I think that if there's anything that we've learned since those days, particularly in light of the costing-out studies and the School Finance Research Collaborative, is that we do know what the cost pressures are. Depending on political courage and the will of the legislature, decisions are made on what needs to be funded. But there's really very little argument anymore about the fact that different populations of students require different amounts of money. That's, that's, that is, that's without, generally speaking, without dispute. And this budget, in my opinion, particularly the rolling up of categoricals that were intended to create a more equitable funding system, not less, but more equitable funding system, this really moves us in the wrong direction. And the notion of rolling up categoricals, block granting them, smacks of a lack of transparency and also not fully funding education in an equitable fashion. So I think this takes us backwards really by a significant amount. And it's, I think it's really unfortunate because I think that over the last couple of years, we were moving to a more equitable, we weren't fully funding, but we were moving in a more equitably funding of education, which I think was, which was a more positive direction for the state and for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Do you have a question or two?
No, this, this, I have no questions about what's going on here. Thank you.
Understood, understood. I just want to make 100% sure. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other board members, other reflections? Please, Dr. Pugh.
I just have a question, and I'm not sure if I missed it, missed it, and it just may not show up here, but we're hearing the reports of school lunches and meals being withheld from children throughout the state. If you could, I don't, did you, so it's here? And not necessarily the budget, but that there have been meals that have been cut by local districts due to the lack of there being a budget. So is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Perhaps we want to talk about, perhaps you want to share the local district that recently made the decision to...
So it's only one? I thought it was more than one.
I think it is one that made a pretty substantial amount of noise around it. This is a premature decision. Dr. Golzinski, if you could share a little bit, and then I may, I may tag team.
I'd be happy to. So fiscal year '25 budget, signed by, passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, includes Section 30D, which is the free meals for all, the Michigan school meals. That budget goes through September 30. So there's a guarantee of funding to cover those meals served through September 30. It's not that the three budget proposals didn't include Michigan school meals, it's just that the House version rolled it up into that per pupil payment. What districts are looking at right now is making the decision of how do you start the school year? Do you start it one way and then change it if things change in a final budget? Where do they draw the line? And so that was the choice that it appears that happened with Okamis, who made the decision to pull out of the community eligibility provision and Michigan school meals and start charging their students with the start of their school year this fall.
So we have, we have written, school superintendents and public school academy directors across the state, we've indicated that fiscal years are October 1 through September 30. We've indicated that they continue to have money for school meals. We've indicated that while we think that the legislature has not done its job and needs to do its job to pass a budget promptly, and that the legislature's delay has not been helpful for local school districts. Nonetheless, local school districts ought not to make precipitous decisions to change either academic support or any other supports, nutritional supports, mental health supports, or for our students and staff. There is no need to make that precipitous decision. Nonetheless, there will be some that will make the decision for a host of different reasons. Some of them are perhaps related to the budget, some of them are perhaps not related to the, to the budget. Nonetheless, we think there's a tremendous value to feeding young people and to having universal meals. We get $900 million or so from the federal government for these meals, $200 million or so from the state the last couple of years for these meals to make up the residual. And the fact of the matter is, is that we get well-fed children who are able to focus to a better degree in class. And if you've ever tried to teach a child who was thinking about food, there's not a lot of multitasking going on there. They're thinking about being hungry. And, you know, I tell people, you know, we need food as adults for only one reason. We need food for energy. We don't need food to grow. We're not growing, not up anyway. A number of us get hangry when we don't have food. And we're adults, and we only need food for the one reason. Imagine if you're a kid and need it for two and don't have the requisite food, for whatever reason or reasons, passing no judgment. So this is, this is a really important issue, and we're proud of the fact that so many came on board to Michigan school meals. We think that's terrific, but they need to stay on board. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any other questions?
And thanks for the, for your voice in the field.
Thank you for lifting that up. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I just want to speak to the more in-person instructional time and add my support for that. And you're absolutely right, we're not going to get rid of snow days, nor are we going to get rid of electrical, you know, outages, et cetera, et cetera. And sometimes schools end up with even less than the 149. And if we're serious about improving literacy, if we're serious about providing the best educational atmosphere for our students, then I think this needs to be looked at very, very seriously at this point. And I hope we're able to do that, whether it's this year or we'll just keep pushing. But thank you for that advocacy.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Anyone else care to share? I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the presence of Spencer Simmons, our director of the Office of Financial Management, the venerable director of the Office of Financial Management, Dylan Bobby Gephardt, our legislative analyst, who's hiding behind Spencer Simmons. Mr. McMillan, to your point about categoricals, we need fewer categoricals, without a doubt. We have far more than we had back in the day when you and Ms. Lipton were in the legislature. We have too many. We need fewer. That we need fewer and that we need virtually none are two different things. There are categoricals that serve discrete purposes. We might disagree on the value of discrete categoricals and their discrete purposes, but for example, it seems odd to roll up assessment funding into a block grant and to give local school districts, as you point out, a choice of whether to file, follow federal or state law, because assessments are not only federal law, they're state law. They're pretty similar in their requirements around assessments. They're not identical, but they're pretty similar. The same is true around children's mental health. I worry if children's mental health isn't funded discreetly, would it be funded at all? You point out 27A and 27C funding scholarships and student-teacher stipends. Those have to be administered by some entity more broadly at the state level, whichever department administers. Initially, it was Treasury, subsequently it was my leap. Mine is not an advocacy for a particular department, it's just an advocacy for some entity up here so that local school districts say, hey, I don't want to fund the tuition of an 18 or 19 or 20-year-old. I don't know if he, she is going to come back to my local school district to, to serve. So there are a number of categoricals which are important to maintain. You talk about the School Finance Research Collaborative. Well, the School Finance Research Collaborative, of course, lifts up a number of those categoricals. Section 31A for economically disadvantaged children, we call it at-risk funding sometimes in the state. Back in the day, when you were in the legislature, it was about $310 million or so. It's over $1 billion now, but SFRC would argue that it should be in excess of $3 billion. Section 41 for English learners, Section 51E for special, for students with disabilities or special education, rural and isolated district, students career and technical education, and, and, and. I share all of these to say that we should have far fewer categoricals, far fewer than we had in '23, far fewer than we had in '24, far fewer than we have in '25, but we still need certain discrete categoricals to help us on the equity side of school funding, not simply the adequacy side of school funding.
Can I, can I ask something about that?
Yeah, please, of course.
Like, let's take an assessment, for example. Let's just, for a number, say that the categorical said $100 for each per pupil, and the district said, I can find it for 50 or 25. Would they then be, you know, can they use that 75 in a categorical for another teacher? Or do they have to just not spend it or kind of find ways to spend it on assessments? Same with mental health. What if they can't find anybody or, you know, $100 for per pupil, they can't find anybody or they're concerned, parents locally are concerned with woke, you know, people who are telling their kids and they're concerned about that, so they'd rather spend it on hiring a couple extra teachers? My understanding is in a categorical, they only can spend it on what is in the categorical and not more broadly.
That's correct. But we're talking about the state assessment system. We're not talking about benchmark assessments, we're not talking about screeners. We're talking about the state assessment system, and you don't get to opt out of it. It has a...
They could do it cheaper, they can't do it cheaper?
No, it's not, it's not a marketplace issue. The state determines what the tests are going to be. And, I mean, we can have a much longer conversation about the value of the state assessment system or any assessment system, but my point is not, is not that. My point is simply, it's one thing to give people the choice of benchmark assessments or screeners, it's another thing to give them, there's only one state assessment system, and there's only one cost associated with that state assessment system. Yeah. I would like to say, Ms. Lipton, your focus was on the House budget, and I understand and share many of your concerns. I think there's another issue that people need to be focused on. It was laid down gently here, but it needs to be reflected upon in more significant measure. We have not simply the challenge of a flattened budget base, both general fund and school aid fund relatively flat, number one. We have the cuts that you mentioned that we know about from the Fed, and we have cuts that have been proposed by the president that may or may not materialize. And then we have other challenges associated with the state budget, including most substantially the effort to shoehorn roads into the state's budget base. All of those elements mean that the budgets that you see up here are high watermarks. They are not likely to materialize in the forms that you see. In certain cases, yes, but in aggregate, no. That's the math of the Medicaid cuts, the SNAP cuts, what ever ends up becoming part of the fiscal year '26 budget at the federal level, and the shoehorning of roads into the state budget, the combined general fund slash school aid fund budget. I share that because a lot of people look at this, and they do it the way we used to do it back in the day. You remember your first two years in the legislature, you didn't have budgets in June... You didn't have budgets in June, your first two years in the Legislature, like you did your last four in the Legislature. But superintendents didn't sweat you over that, an enormous amount, in 2009 and 2010. And the reason they didn't sweat you a lot over it is because you passed a budget, governor's budget came down, House budget came down, Senate budget came down, and there was a very narrow difference among those budgets. And so we knew roughly what we had to plan with. And though we had to wait until the end of September-ish to get that budget, we knew months earlier roughly what we were going to get. 2011, in one way, you improved upon things from a process perspective. You move up the passage of the budget into June. From a product perspective, a $470 per kid cut, not a good thing. But one way or the other, for years, you've always given us a pretty narrow difference between Governor, House, Senate, or among Governor, House, Senate. Same is not true in 2025. This is the most complicated budget scenario that I've seen in my career. You have an elongated process, number one. You have a great deal of difference between House and Senate budgets, number two. You have pending items federally, and you have the uncertainty about what's going to happen with roads and the impact of roads on everything else in the state budget. And not simply the General Fund, but as we know, the School Aid Fund, too. I share all of that to say that this is very, very hard for leaders at the local district level to plan for students and staff. And on the margins, this is going to result in very conservative budgeting at the local school district level, that on the margins is going to reduce staffing over what it otherwise would have been. Local school superintendents, their business administrators, their school boards, many others understand this. I'm not sure a broader world understands it that well. It's not just like, well, you have roughly what you had the preceding year. Figure it out. We don't know what we're going to have relative to fiscal year '25. We have no idea, literally none. We're at a little bit less dynamic at the federal level. And if we did not have this uncertainty around roads at the state level, the elongation into August and soon into September would simply mimic 2009 and 2010. We wouldn't be happy with it. But back in the day, it was about a $25 difference in per pupil foundation allowance from one budget to another. You remember, Dr. Pritchett, because you were leading back in the day at the local school district level. But today, we're talking about giant swings. And local school superintendents, their boards are risk averse. And the consequence of being risk averse is on the margins, holding up the hiring of particular positions. That does not benefit schoolchildren. That hurts schoolchildren. And I don't care what anybody says that we used to do it this way. Some of us are old enough to remember back in the day. We might have been younger, but we were there. I want to say one other thing. These four literacy efforts are among a small number of research-based efforts in a budget. Much of what goes out in a budget is legitimate, but it's broad. It's to pay for staff, it's to pay for staff salaries and benefits, it's to pay for utilities, and, and, and. These four elements are research-based. It's mandatory letters training. Number of states, Mississippi, North Carolina, Utah, have done mandatory letters training. We prefer, rather than mandatory letters training, local control. But local control hasn't served us well in terms of early literacy and early numeracy. So at some point, we have to choose between local control and strengthened literacy. The Legislature passed strengthened literacy laws last year. Those laws did not include mandatory letters training and need to. The law also should include more money for high-quality, research-based instructional materials. We handed out $87 million, as you pointed out. We need to do more of that. The new state literacy laws, which a number of organizations in the education ecosystem opposed, those laws narrow and deepen the range of work around early literacy. That can't be done by letting everyone do anything. And then finally, low class sizes and high-poverty K3s. Board members, go out to schools in September and October. Go to your favorite neighborhood elementary school that is poor. And look at the class sizes, and you decide if they are small enough to get it done, the students and staff in those classes. Should have 17 to 1. K3, high-poverty classrooms, 17, 18 to 1. You give students and staff a fighting chance. Got a lot of kids, they have less at home, they need more from us in schools. And finally, time. We've taken it away from children, not because of the pandemic, but in spite of the pandemic. The Legislature did it, the Legislature needs to correct it. The Legislature permits professional development to be in lieu of student instructional time. Professional development is terrific. It shouldn't count instead of student instructional time. It should be in addition to student instructional time. And finally, 15 virtual days instead of in-person instructional time coming out of the pandemic? Did we learn anything in the pandemic from the pandemic, except that virtual, beyond virtual, isn't vaguely close to being in person for the vast majority of schoolchildren? At some point, if we keep reducing the amount of face-to-face time that our young people have with staff in schools, people are going to begin to believe us that we can do school without us. There's a whole school of thought that suggests that that makes sense. Keep reducing the amount of time. We're giving them fodder for their arguments. Thank you, appreciate you. Madam President, to you for your remarks.
Probably this month, we continue the most important work before us, our constitutional responsibility to appoint Michigan's next State Superintendent of Public Instruction. And as outlined in Article 8, Section 3 of Michigan Constitution, this is one of the State Board of Education's most consequential duties with impacts that will shape our public education for years to come. And I want to begin by thanking every board member for your engagement thus far, and by offering again my congratulations to the candidates we have advanced in the process. And again, also extend sincere appreciation to all applicants who put themselves forward for consideration. Applying for a role of this magnitude takes courage, dedication, and a deep commitment to Michigan's children, and for that, they deserve our respect. I also want to thank those who participated in the community engagement phase, from the stakeholders and our focus groups, to the many Michiganders who completed the online survey. Your voices are vital in ensuring that this process is ethical, transparent, and reflective of the values of the people we serve. And I thank HYA for integrating that new step in the process, because since I've been here, that I know of, we've not had the public engagement. So thank them for implementing that process. I want to address directly any suggestion that publicly, made publicly or privately, that this process is corrupt or that the outcome has been fixed. I take strong exception to these claims. They are both unfounded and harmful, not only to the credibility of this board, but to the public trust in the integrity of our constitutional duty. The process we are following was discussed and adopted by the full board in open session. It is grounded in fairness and transparency, and it is consistent with how past superintendent searches have been conducted. And I want to say that today, we've proven that though we may have differences in perspective, and I say this overall, the work before us requires collaboration and good faith. We've shown that our oaths are a commitment to serve all Michigan children, and I look forward to moving into the next phase of this process with all board members fully engaged, communicating openly, and working together in service of the students, families, and educators who depend on us. The decision we make in the coming weeks will reverberate across the state and the country. Let's continue to rise to meet that responsibility with the seriousness, integrity, and unity that it demands respectfully.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I just want to note that school districts are beginning to buzz a little bit more. In just a few short weeks, every school district in the state will be open. That's good news for parents everywhere and most students and most staff as well. I wish everyone a great deal of luck for a wonderful school year. And finally, to the board, good luck in your search. Congratulations on the progress made today, and good luck in the coming weeks. That's all I have. We're going to pivot to the state, please.
Can I ask, like, JKL, I just have a quick question for you as we move...
Yeah, sure.
...through the agenda. Yeah, so these changes to the delivery of special ed services, JK, L, and M, and I've asked about it before, and I looked at the details, are they substantive? And also, do they, are the people that are impacted, the families in those districts, are they able to weigh in on these changes if they are substantive, or maybe they're not? I don't know.
So the changes range from very substantive to not so much. Sometimes they are related to finances, sometimes they are not, sometimes they are related to services, sometimes they are not. Dr. Harmela, would you like to speak to process? And for the listening audience, Mr. McMillan is speaking to the approved changes to the Eaton RISA, Kalamazoo RISA, ISD, and St. Joseph County ISD plans for the delivery of special education programs and services.
Sure, thank you, thank you, board. Every ISD plan has the same format, so if you look at them, you'll see, A, programs and services, it's the same in every plan. There's a section that says parent advisory committee. The ISDs have parent advisory committees made up of volunteers who want to weigh into special ed matters and must weigh in on the ISD plan. So that section of each plan describes how that ISD selects their volunteers, who's involved, how they go about that process. And that is included in every ISD plan and each approval.
So these changes, do they go through a process before they come into the proposal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they go through a process with the parent advisory committee as members, as well as every district in that ISD region. The beginning pages of the plan, you'll see a checkbox where every superintendent has to sign off, as well as the parent advisory committee.
Okay.
Yep.
And I would imagine if some people didn't like the change, they could voice it persons, you know, during our public comment, or...
Either ours or their ISD as they're going through the process. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate that. Next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. We'll now hear from Mr. Bob Wheaton, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, and Ms. Olivia Ponte, Legislative Liaison in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, who provide the state and federal legislative update. I feel like a fair bit of that has already been done.
Good afternoon, board members. And yeah, I'll just quickly turn it back over to Olivia, who has more about what's going on in the Legislature right now.
I'm back. So, as Dr. Rice alluded to, the majority of legislative activity right now is around the budget. So the governor did not sign any education-related bills this month. And interestingly enough, the Legislature and the governor have combined for only six public acts for the entire first seven months of this legislative session. So for six public acts in seven months is very low. Kind of gives us an idea that there isn't much legislative activity going on. There is, however, on the policy side, a Senate Education Committee that was just posted for tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., and the Senate Education Committee will be taking up newly introduced today Senate Bills 493 and 494 that mirrors the language we discussed just a few moments ago on low-class sizes in high-poverty K3s. So those bills will be up for a committee hearing tomorrow, as well as previously introduced Senate Bill 492, which would provide guidelines for disenrollment. But other than that much, all the legislative activity is around the budget or lack thereof.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments, board members? Once, twice, Dr. Pugh?
I can't remember the main question that I had. It'll probably come after we're finished, but cellphone usage. Any updates that you want to share there?
Yes, so about two and a half weeks ago, the House version of the cellphone policy bill, House Bill 4141, was put on the board, but it did not get enough votes to pass. Several Republicans were absent, and all of the Democrats voted no. So House Bill 4141 failed, and there's kind of been a little bit of political fallout because of this, I would argue, not related to cellphones, but because of the caucus disputes. The Speaker Hall removed Minority Vice Chair Farhat Fromhisi as the Minority Vice Chair of Appropriations. And just this week, I believe, Speaker Hall did indicate that he thinks cellphones are dead for this legislative session this year. However, there is still the opportunity to revisit that bill, and there's the opportunity to revisit the Senate version of that bill as well, Senator Polhankey's bill, so.
Anta Paul Hankey. Did we sign Anta Paul Hankey's?
Yes, we supported it.
Any other questions?
I do, but I don't remember what it was.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, very good. Ms. Lipton?
Just a quick comment. The road funding vis a vis school aid conversation, just for some historical perspective, it's not a new idea. I mean, that's an idea that, and I can't speak, you know, prior to 2008, 2009, but certainly that was, it was the very same thing that was bandied about then, to basically pull out the sales tax on gas or somehow exclude that from the School Aid Fund, which is the primary driver of our school funding, and use that to fund roads without any thought about the hole that it's going to blow into the School Aid Fund. So it's now 2025, and it was discussed back in 2008. And, you know, still the same old, same old debate. And people seem to be so surprised that when you take away a portion of taxes, gas, which is the state sales tax on gas, that somehow they seem to think that that hole in the School Aid Fund, the schools, is somehow going to be magically filled by a unicorn? Yes, I don't know. I just find it really amazing that the very same debates are still happening later.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other reflections? Questions, comments? Hearing and seeing, none? Thank you, Mr. Wheaton, Ms. Ponte. Board members, we're at Board Comments. Any gas in your tank for Board Comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing, none. Board and community. Our next meetings, it's a little bit choppier than normal. But we have special meetings next week, the week of August 18th, for the purposes of state superintendent interviews, finalist interviews, the week of August 25th. More information made available when finalized Tuesday, September 9th, Tuesday, October 14th, and Thursday, November 13th are are the next regularly scheduled state board meetings. If there are any topics board members would like to recommend for future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or me. Boarded is 2:50 p.m. Enjoy the gift of time.